Kaufman. Mrs. Cole Poniewich.
Here.
Mr. Nosteen. Mr. Poy.
Here.
Mr. Prezioso. Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 8, 2015, at all schools, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsky. Mr. Tharney, would you please give us your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Poy. The report tonight is going to be fairly brief. The high school's National Honor Society will soon be holding inductions for recently accepted members for next year. Additionally, class officer elections will be taking place. Some banners and signs are also visible throughout the school for that. AP testing will be finishing this week. I believe the last exams are on Friday. And finally, the Health and Physical Education Department at the high school will be coordinating an Armed Service Appreciation Day the Friday before Memorial Day. Other clubs and organizations at the high school such as the History Club are getting involved as well, and it's meant to honor the veterans and active service personnel within the community, and there will be competitive events for those students who have opted to participate. And that concludes my student board members' report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tharney. We will now recognize our Teacher of the Year and Educational Services Professionals of the Year with the awarding of plaques. Earlier this evening, they were honored at a dinner just prior to this meeting, and I believe this presentation will be done by our superintendent, Mr. Ventrello.
I just want to thank everyone for attending this evening. We just had a wonderful dinner recognizing the Teachers of the Year for 2015, as well as for the Educational Services Professionals as well for 2015. It's always a special time having that dinner, to be honest with you, because it's honoring and recognizing teachers. And obviously, the district, obviously, other than students, is all about teaching. With that said, as I like, Mr. Poy and myself will come up over here by the table, and we can have, we'll call up the individual teachers and Educational Services Professionals. You can take your, your families can come up. Whoever you would like to do this, take some nice pictures, we'll be there, and we'll just get through this, all right? Thank you for your cooperation.
Okay. Educational Services Professional of our school is Lauren Kohl.
Thank you very much.
Brookside School, Educational Services Professional, and that's Diane Allen. Diane.
Apple Garden School, Educational Services Professional, and that is Christine Dillon. Christine.
Sue Boles. Sue.
It is.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you very much.
Educational Services Professional from a placement for the middle school. Woodland School, we have Jamie Rocha, Educational Services Professional, and we also have Lisa Fries, a teacher of the year. Congratulations for both of your stand. Thank you. Got it? Yep. Thank you. From Mill Lake School, we have Brent Lutzka, Educational Services Professional.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. We'll take a picture. Okay, three people. I'll, yeah.
Nice job.
Educational Services Professional of Monroe Township High School, we have Michelle Rockoff. I believe that Mr. Goodall is representing Michelle. Round of applause for Michelle. Big round of applause for Michelle. We have the Board of Education and the entire district. Thank you for the kids in Monroe. Thank you.
Due to the time factor, I did not get to make any personal remarks at the dinner, but I would like to congratulate all of our teachers and Educational Specialists of the Year. But I also want to thank you for the great work that you are doing. You are an inspiration to your colleagues, and I hope that you will continue to be that. It was very nice to hear you speak of your schools and the families that you experience there in the school, among your colleagues, and just remember that you are there, just as other teachers have been there, to console, to support, and to encourage, and we wish you well in the years to come. Thank you.
Teachers and their families, if you want to continue staying for the Board of Education, you certainly may, or you may want to use this time at any given time, obviously, to At this time, we have a testing presentation. Which one are we doing, Dory?
We're doing the Talented and Gifted.
The talented and gifted. No cluster grouping of guests, that's Lori McConnell. Lori, you're up at this podium already.
Hi, my name is Lori McConnell. I'm Supervisor of Grants, Testing, and Special Projects, and I'm here to do a brief presentation on our Talented and Gifted Program in Monroe Township. I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a cold, so. So that you know, according to New Jersey mandate, we are required to have a K to 12 gifted and talented program that, I'm sorry, where we identify processes for gifted and talented students using multiple measures. Students are compared to peers within their district, and this is a board-approved program. Our programs are as follows. We, in K to 1, we use differentiated instruction for gifted and talented students within the district, within the classroom. For grades 2 to 8, we have an after-school program as well as differentiated instruction within the classroom. The after-school program is by subject, area, language arts, math, science, and art. The classes meet one time per week. In grades 9 through 12, we use Advanced Placement and Honors classes by subject area for our gifted and talented program. In addition, we have a cluster grouping process for grades, this year, grade 4, and next year, for grades 3 to 5. This is for highly gifted students within the regular classroom. I will highlight that later in this presentation. So that you know, our tag numbers and students of students and teachers, we have quite a few students that are in our tag program. In math, 374, teachers 25 for math. This would be from grades 2 through 8. In science, we have 198 students and 12 teachers. In language arts, we have 146 students and 18 teachers. In art, we have 110 students and 8 teachers. So I wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about cluster grouping. This is something we piloted in the 2014-15 school year. Cluster grouping is a method for providing full-time gifted education services with the potential to raise achievement for all students. What happens is gifted students are purposely placed together into a mixed ability classroom. So it's not a homogeneous classroom, it is a heterogeneous classroom, and these gifted students are based, placed in this classroom based on their abilities, potential, and achievement. The, back one. So the purpose of cluster grouping is to challenge our very highly gifted students every day, all day, rather than just like one day a week. It also creates learning and leadership opportunities, not just for the highly gifted students, but for all students. It empowers our teachers by expanding awareness and providing preparation. It also provides ongoing assessment of students' strengths and needs, and it also provides extended learning opportunities for all students. For 2014-15, our pilot year, we had four 4th grade classes totaling 22 students. In 2015 and 16, our tentative numbers, because we haven't finalized the list yet, we will have actually 16 classes in grades 3 through 5, and potentially, it will involve about 77 students. That would be the maximum. It will go down potentially a little bit from there. So, ongoing, we really try to collect data to support this program each and every year. Some of the things that we do, both for identification and to monitor the success of the gifted and talented program, is we look at COGAT test scores, we look at teacher drifted rating scales, we use parent rating scales. This, however, is only used for the cluster grouping. We look at DRA reading levels, we look at mathematics benchmarks. For art tag, we look at artistic creativity, and we have also looked at parent, teacher, and student surveys. I'm going to leave a stack on the table where you picked up your agendas of some of the results of the cluster grouping parent, student, teacher surveys, if you would like to pick that up on your way out. So regarding the costs, tag includes, tag meaning the after-school program, that's what we refer to as tag in this district, includes a teacher rate of $116.54 for 1.4 hours per class. In addition to that, the teachers receive supplies and materials of $250 per class. That varies a little bit, some classes get a little bit less. Things that use a lot of supplies, like art, use a little bit more, but on average, it's about $250. Cluster grouping, on the other hand, is a totally cost-effective way to meet the needs of gifted students. There really are no additional funds, we simply use a teacher who is a current teacher within the classroom. The only additional funds for that would be professional development for these teachers, and we cover that through Title II A funding. And that's it. Any questions?
Seeing none. Thank you, Lori, for your presentation and all the information as far as the other cluster grouping program. Thank you. At this time, we can go right into the next presentation, Dr. Alvic.
I'm going to stay here, but I just have to find the clicker.
Now, where did the clicker go? That is the question.
While Dr. Alvic is looking for the clicker, I'd like to remind all members of the audience to, if you have a cellphone with you, would you please either turn it off or turn it to vibrate, since this meeting is being both video and sound recorded, and our equipment is directly in the area where our public sits. Your cooperation in this will be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so as one of our requirements of CUSAC is reporting out each year on our state testing data. So that's what I'm going to be sharing with you this evening. So, whoops, sorry. So the first thing that I'm going to share with you is a comparison of the student cohorts. So we followed students over the past three years. The number that you'll see is actually the percentage of students who have scored proficient or, and advanced proficient, so any student that scored above a 200 on the New Jersey ASK. So this is a 3rd grade cohort. So in 2012, those were the 3rd grader scores. In blue is the LAL score, in, I guess it's kind of an orangey color, is the math scores. So this is the same group of students over three years. So in 3rd grade, it's the first two columns, in 4th grade, their New Jersey ASK scores in the middle two columns, and 5th grade in the last two columns. The difficult part of comparing year to year with our students is they're taking a very different test. And I'll be able to share with you, as I go through the presentation, you'll be able to see the comparison with the state average and our DFG average, so I think that's a better comparison. This is a 4th grade cohort, so this was in 2012, the students were in grade 4. In 2013, the students were in grade 5, and in 2014, the students were in grade 6. And again, the blue is LAL, the orange is math. Here's a 5th grade cohort. In 5th grade in 2012, 6th grade in 2013, 7th grade in 2014, and a 6th grade cohort. So it just kind of gives you the comparison. Again, it's difficult to compare from year to year, these are the same students, but they're not the same tests. They're different tests and different standards. So, a better way, I think, to compare is to look at how we compare to the district factor groups. The district factor groups are other communities that are relative to us in our socioeconomic status. We are a FG, FG district factor group, so this is comparing to other, there are 86 other districts in New Jersey that are in the same factor group. Again, the data is the percentage of students scoring above 200, which would be proficient and advanced proficient. So in 2014, on the HESPA, that's the High School Proficiency Assessment, in the blue, again, is LAL, in the orange is math. The first column for each of them is the state average. The second column is the average of other DFG districts in the state of New Jersey, and in the third column is how our district compares to them. And what you'll notice as we go through this is our district has, is always above the state average and the DFG average. So this is the high school, this is the 11th grade test that our students took last year. This is our 3rd grade comparison. So again, we're comparing our district, which is the 3rd column, to the state and the DFG average, and again, you can see we're higher in both areas. This is our 4th grade. 4th grade, notice there's a 3rd set of columns, that's because in 4th grade, they also took the New Jersey ASK science, and they will continue to take the New Jersey ASK science, even though we took the PARC this year. 4th and 8th grade and 11th grade are still taking the New Jersey ASK science. And again, you'll notice that our district averages are higher than the state and the DFG averages. Here's our 5th grade students. 5th grade takes LAL and math, and again, the 3rd column is our district compared to the DFG and the state average. Here's our 6th grade. Here's our 7th grade. And here's our 8th grade, and again, 8th grade has the 3rd set of columns because they do the science. I will post this presentation on the district website so that you can look at the numbers more closely. So basically, taking a look at this, our, as I've said already, our scores are higher compared to the district factor groups, the other, the other 86 districts in New Jersey in the same district factor group, and the state average. We are going to continue to review our curriculum and our assessments. We have a five-year plan with that, all of our supervisors and myself worked on that, so there's a five-year plan to review our curriculum and continue to improve our assessments and our benchmark assessments in our classrooms, now that we have seen what the new state test is requiring of our students. We also will be continuing our teacher evaluation model. We are increasing our requirements for teachers to be effective and highly effective next year, as that was our plan, as we rolled out the new teacher evaluation model. But it is unclear for next year how the state is going to be comparing the PARC assessment results with New Jersey ASK assessment results. But they are, have assured me, I spoke with Dr. Morano, the county, Executive County Superintendent, that they're going to be offering us some templates of how we can present that data. We do not expect to get the PARC data into the district until October of next year, and then we'll be able to take a look at it as we move forward. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Dr. Alvic. Thank you, Dr. Alvic, that was very comprehensive.
Mourinho?
I'm wondering, when we do these assessments, does this take into the use of our technology and things like that, or this is just purely the test?
This is just state testing data. It's one of the requirements that we have to do, that we have to present this to you and to the public each year with New Jersey CUSAC. This is just state testing data.
State testing, it's not any in-house data or testing or anything?
No.
Okay, so it's just comparison with everybody else taking the same test?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Alvic, I do have a question, even though it didn't seem to be broken down in terms of below proficiency, being proficient, and above proficiency. But I know many districts, they have put a concerted effort in moving students from the proficient level to the above proficient level, and could you elaborate it all in terms of what our district is doing in that effort?
Yes, that's done, it's done at the building level through our school goals committees. The school goals committees actually look at all of the data that comes in from the state, which is, I tried to make it brief for purposes of the presentation, but we do get, we do get data broken down by the different groups in the districts, male, female, different races, special education, general education. So we do get that data back at the school level, and that's what the school goals committee look at, look at, and then the school goals committee create their school goals and their school SGO is based on that. So yes, there has been, and since Dr. Hamilton was here, there has been a concerted effort in the schools, not only to raise our students to the proficiency level for those students that were below proficiency, but also to move more students into that advanced proficient range.
Okay, and what's, what special efforts are made with those students that are not proficient, below proficiency on the test?
It depends on where the student's needs. If it's special education, we look at their special education accommodations, modifications. Teachers work together, at the K to 2 level, they use response to intervention, so they are meeting every eight weeks, the administrators, the teachers, the reading specialists, and the basic skills teachers, on how they can implement different strategies and interventions for students as they move forward. At the 3 to 8 level, we use MFR, which is the Managing for Results Process, where principals meet with individual teachers and teams of teachers to look at the data specifically and what strategies they can implement in the classrooms to help improve that. And then the teachers are actually bringing data, sample assessments, student work, to those meetings, so that they're really, they're really looking specifically at what's going on in the classroom and how we can improve that.
Anyone else with questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, one last thing. It happens every couple of years, and sometimes the format changes. I think it's beneficial for this board to get a breakdown, school by school, because we have some grades within the standardized testing where we know at certain grade levels, it's the middle school or the high school, but at the elementary school, it'd be very important for us to see how our schools stack up to each other, to see if there's areas that need improvement or things that are doing great, so we can get a better picture of how it's going at the school level.
Okay, I can get that for you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, then we will move on to item nine. The Board Reorganization Date Discussion. Mr. Nosteen. Mr. Nothstein is a, he is our board delegate to the New Jersey State School Boards Association. And he, unfortunately, he is not here tonight. He is away on business. But I believe that one of our members of the board had felt that we should spend a little time discussing this so that we could give some direction to Mr. Nothstein. He has a meeting, I believe, this Saturday, and there will be a vote taken. Mr. Nothstein had mentioned this at a prior board meeting. And I believe you have just received a resolution that I will read so that the public can have it, and then we will have a discussion. It is recommended that the Board of Education request that the board's delegate to NJSBA either support or oppose the resolution of the Linden Wall Board of Education in Camden County regarding reorganization meetings at the May 16, 2015 Delegate Assembly of the New Jersey School Board Association. The board president and the business administrator, board secretary, are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education. So, our task tonight is to decide, do we want to support this resolution of the Linden Wall Board of Education, which I believe is to have reorganization meetings occur more quickly than they are currently occurring. Currently, the board, the new board members are elected in November at the general election. The current board remains in place until the end of the calendar year. In fact, until the first reorganization meeting. And in the past, that meeting has been held in early January, usually within the first seven days of January. This Linden Wall resolution, and it's the only item, I think, that the Delegate Assembly is voting on, the Linden Wall resolution is suggesting that the reorganization meeting occur in December. And I would assume it would be early December, with the election having been in November. So, right now, what we need to do is discuss this for a bit. Any comments about this? And then we need to decide whether we want to support the Linden Wall resolution or oppose it, so that we can share that direction with Mr. Nothstein, so that he will know, as our representative to the state assembly, how we would like that to be voted upon. Anyone have any comments about this? Ryback?
I don't have a comment. I think I'd like to hear the board members' thoughts on what would the advantage be for moving it up, you know, one month or not? I think that's where, you know, the conversation has to be. I mean, is there an advantage to, what advantages might there be? And I think the public has to hear that as well, for moving it up.
Okay. Well, does anyone on the board see that that would be advantageous to do that? Because Mr. Ryback is asking, what are the advantages? So, I'm not really certain if any of us see that there are any advantages.
That's where, you know, where it's at.
Ms. Arminio?
Kathy, you can go first.
Okay, Mrs. Kaliponovich?
Well, not to answer Mr. Ryback's question.
Use your mic, Kathy.
I don't.
Wasn't so much question, it was just a thought for leading the discussion.
Oh, no. And I don't have an answer to that. But we're being asked to support or oppose a resolution. I'd like to see the resolution. We don't know exactly what the whole resolution is. So, how can I support something if I don't see the resolution? When we support something as a board for Monroe, we get the whole resolution. So, I can't support something when I don't know what the resolution is or oppose something.
Okay. Ms. Arminio, did you have a comment or statement to make?
Well, I just think that the question is, and I agree with Kathy Kaliponovich, that we really should know exactly what the language is of the resolution before we actually vote on it. But it really seems to me to be the people who are duly elected, their term ends on December 31st. So, technically, they have the right to make decisions up until that time. I do understand that it's sort of a lame duck issue if new board members replace the ones that are there, and that you would want to do any business and have those people make decisions. But perhaps if, I mean, I don't know which, like I said, without the resolution, I don't really have a comment about it specifically, but I think I understand that's the purpose. So, but I, you know, there's a lot to be said that the new board members going forward should have the ability to make decisions for the next year, but also that the people that were there are duly elected until December 31st. So, it's a little bit of, I think it's a tough decision, but I think there's pros and cons on both sides. So, without the full language of the resolution, I would agree with Kathy.
Ryback?
Now, we had some discussion. Maybe I can bring some thoughts that I have. Kathy, I couldn't agree with you more. I can't see voting on something that we don't know how it reads and we don't see it. But, you know, to tell the board members that are duly elected through December 31st, you may call them lame ducks, but are we to say that they don't care anymore? That they're less professional than they were when they first started or less motivated? I find that insulting. I think that every board member who's elected through December 31st, I would think, has just as much care in them as when they started, and certainly a lot more experience. So, I think that it could be a real disservice to move it up, and an insult to sitting board members whose election is up, their time is up and on the board.
Mr. Kaufman?
I think, I want to echo what Steve was saying. I think the challenge is really figuring out what, if any, you know, impact is there into our BAU. So, things are going on in November to January timeframe, and there could be board members that have been part of a process that is being implemented or have been participating in committee meetings or what have you for that whole prior year. I think the challenge really is, when a new board member comes in in November and they find out that they've been elected to this job, there's an incredible ramp-up that occurs from the time they get elected to the time they actually have to sit in the seat over here. And some people are very active in the community, and they come to board meetings, and they're very familiar with what's going on. But we do have a lot of folks that, you know, put their hat in the, you know, hand in the hat or whatever.
Hat in the ring.
Hat in the ring, or, you know, throw their, in some cases, throw their white glove into the ring, whatever. And they may find themselves a little bit behind the eight ball of having to get up to speed on all the nuances and all the connectivity between all the decisions that we make and how all of these different committees are connected to each other and all these different activities we do, how they interrelate to each other. So, it's very, I think it's very challenging for a new board member when they come on board to really speak with authority on a lot of things that we do in committee, having not been in any of the committees previously. So, I think we have to really, to your point, think about what that resolution is. And the reality is, if we're talking about December to January, what are we talking? One meeting? I mean, yeah, it's a month in calendar time, but it's like one meeting. I mean, if we're talking about doing the reorg, if elections happen the second week in November, then if we're talking about doing a reorganization meeting right after elections, at least that's several more meetings in advance, and you can eliminate that lame duck. I'm just concerned with folks, sometimes it happens where you get elected, and now you're in the limelight, you know it's going to be your job, and more often than not, we'll start seeing people that may have gotten elected now come to board meetings, and at least they have a few under their belt to at least get the idea of what's going on. But I think any new board member will say, just sitting out there is not the same as sitting over here. So, I think we have to, you know, think about what the pros and cons would be, you know, relative to any BAU operations that we have. Mike or Dennis, if you want to comment, because that November, December timeframe with budgets and everything else, you know.
I would ask, if I may, just maybe, Mike, could you just talk about as far as the impact on the budget? Because as I'm thinking about that.
Mr. Poise?
I've read the resolution, and the crux of the whole resolution is moving the board's reorganization meeting, as Mr. Poise said, from the first week of January to either November or December. That would be school board's position, then, to recommend to the legislators for a law change. It is unclear if anything will come to fruition, even if school board supports this movement by that school district to move the reorganization meeting earlier. One of the challenges that we face is that board members are not sworn in until the reorganization meeting, and until such time, they're not entitled to confidential communications of the board. So, you know, that ramping up period is difficult without admittance to the board, because you're not entitled to any of the communications which are lengthy and frequent. So, again, the resolution does not go into law and how the law would treat the, some of the anomalies that would occur with the existing board. And Monroe has bylaws that we have, a nine-member board and a one-member from the receiving district, so we have 10 members on the board. If you had a reorganization meeting earlier and you allowed three new board members potentially to join, you could have as many as 13 board members. That would require a bylaw change, or it would have to require the departure of some of the existing members who were voted in by the community to serve a full term. So, there's a lot of cloudiness regarding the law, and I've spoken to our board attorney about this, and she concurs, that it's quite muddy legally, even if school boards takes the position to support moving the reorganization meeting earlier. And for that reason, not that I have a stake in it like a board member, but a board counsel, and I felt that this is a little premature and undefined at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gorsky? Anyone else have a comment? Ms. DeMeo?
Yeah, thank you. I think New Jersey School Boards Association doesn't support this resolution. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Do we know that?
I do not know.
Did they take a stand on it?
The resolution that we wrote allows the board to go either way. I forgot the exact position that they took on it.
Okay. Okay.
And it's unfortunate that Tom is not here, since he is the representative.
Right.
That I don't know what information Tom actually wanted as he was going to this meeting. So, maybe that has to be tabled, then, is that maybe there needs to be no action. Obviously, I can't presume that that's up to the board president and to the Board of Education. Without Tom being here, it becomes difficult to know what the intent is.
Well, I think one of the reasons this was put on the agenda was there was some concern that if the board's delegate to the assembly is going to be voting on something, then that delegate needs to have some sense of what the board's wishes are. And that makes sense to me personally, as opposed to, we don't give our delegate any kind of direction. That would mean that the delegate is free to follow whatever personal beliefs that delegate has, and I don't think that's necessarily a healthy thing to do. I am going to put forward a slightly different motion than what is read here, because this was simply a reading of a motion. The motion was not yet made. I am going to put forward a slightly different resolution that I think might be a little bit clearer in terms of what we might want. And that resolution essentially would be that we would direct our delegate not to vote in favor of anything that would change our present timelines and procedures of reorganization meetings and board elections, you know? Just have to get that wording correct. Ms. DeMeo, you have something?
Could, would we put something in there without discussion of the full board?
I'm sorry?
Like, you're saying, you're telling the delegate not to change anything that we currently have in place, but should we include something in there that says, you know, we need to have discussions of the full board prior to any voting, like?
Oh, so you're speaking also of future, future resolutions that the delegate might be voting on?
Yes.
Okay, that's a little bit broader.
Yeah.
And we could certainly make such a motion and deal with that tonight. Ms. Arminio?
But as a point of order, this is the resolution that's on the table, right? So, we would have to either vote for this, yes or no, before we can move on to another resolution? I just want a clarification.
It hasn't been read yet. We haven't, it hasn't been into the paper yet.
It's just a discussion.
And I only read it so that the audience would know, the public would know what it was that we were discussing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't make it a motion. All right?
Okay.
Okay? Any, Ms. Kaliponovich?
To clarify what happens at these meetings, I don't know if you've ever been to one, but they get more information than we're going to get. So, they will have the discussion, and they will have other administrators there to give them the pros and the cons in being able to vote. So, this, I think they only have one or two meetings a year, and usually, they have a whole agenda full of items that you cannot bring back to your board and then ask for a discussion so that you can vote in the future. It kind of needs to be done at that same time. So, I don't know that you're, you didn't make a motion, but that would work for anything that they bring up.
So, they don't get the agenda ahead of time and know what they're going to be talking about?
Yes. I believe they, Rob?
Ms. Sarneski, you have something to offer?
Use the microphone, Rob. The delegates' assembly gets the agenda approximately three to four weeks ahead of time. The motions go up for this meeting, this is May. You're asked to give a resolution, a board would be asked to give a resolution, or guidelines to a resolution about four months in advance. So, in the beginning of the year, I think the cutoff is February. Then, it is written up by attorneys and then presented to the delegates' assembly by the individual district who brought the resolution forward. And the delegates for each individual school board is given, I got mine probably about a month ago, to read.
So, there is time.
There is time. It's a short amount of time. And we are given information that can be shared, if the delegate wishes, with the other board members.
Well, why do we have it?
Well, you might recall, at a previous meeting, Mr. Nothstein did share with us the fact that this resolution was going to be voted on, and he also said, but he also mentioned that it was the only resolution that they were going to be voting on, which I thought was a little odd, because I know normally it is quite a few, even though I've never been a delegate. But just from reading the literature we get from the School Boards Association, there's usually quite a few resolutions. But Mr. Nothstein had said that there was only one, and he was apprising the board of that fact in a prior meeting that we had.
Yeah, I'm just questioning that. I know that was an agenda item, and it's going to be discussed, but if there is actual content behind this, why isn't it here for us to see? Because they're going to vote on it, I'm assuming they're going to vote on it on the day after tomorrow. So, I'm assuming, if they got it three weeks ago, that there was content shipped out a while ago. Why isn't it here?
And...
I'm asking. I know you may not know.
Well, yes, what I am saying is that I understand your point, and I agree with that point. We were not asked by Mr. Nothstein to necessarily discuss this, this particular thing. I think it came in the broader sense that should the board's delegate to the assembly be empowered to vote without having any idea as to what the wishes of the board on particular items, what the wishes of that board are. And I understand that, Mr. Sarneski, it sounds as if maybe some resolutions, but I don't know this for a fact, do some resolutions get introduced that very day, or are they always known in advance?
The resolutions are known well in advance. What happens on that day is they sometimes get slightly too highly modified, as far as the words. So, it ultimately depends on what the resolution is. You can go in there with a one-paragraph resolution, it ends up to be voted on, it's three, four paragraphs long. There's different representatives have different ideas onto wording situations with the 260-some school districts, most of them being represented on that afternoon or that morning. Things do change.
Yeah, we really have no idea at the end what amendments to the motion will be made, what changes to the motion will be made, and how it goes from the original motion to the motion... the motion that will be finalized and voted upon. So, I mean, we really don't know what it's gonna be.
One more, one more thing to throw a fly in the ointment. All right, so we have a motion that we're supposed to support as far as yea or nay, correct?
Well, it really hasn't been yet...
It hasn't been read yet.
Yes.
In theory, it's gonna be a yea or nay, but the motion itself has options in it. It's either oppose or support. So that by itself, we're either gonna support it by voting yea or saying no to, it's ambiguous as well.
No, the way that, I think the way that was written, and I didn't write this myself, but I think the way it's written is that we would choose one of those words, okay?
That's what would be...
And that would be the motion.
Got you.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, so...
One more thing. I just want you to keep in mind that whatever goes forth as a delegate's assembly, there's many more steps that need to be taken before any action or any law, any mandate is given on this. This is only step number two or three in a board like ourselves trying to make change in state legislation, rules or mandates.
All right, so I'm sensing somewhat from the discussion that there's one, the issue of it might be a bit impractical for us to try to direct our delegate as to how they should vote on various resolutions that will be dealt with. That's one of the things that I heard. And the other is that without knowing the specifics of the resolution, without knowing what amendments might be made to that resolution, can we really direct the delegate at this point to do anything, one way or the other? So I guess I'm saying, do we want to make any motion at all to deal with this matter? It appears not. Okay, I see a lot of heads going this way, I don't see any heads going this way. So, okay, we have discussed it, we see that, you know, it is, it is a bit of a quandary, and we will leave it at that at this point. Is that satisfactory?
A little tickle. We're gonna stick with one.
All right, thank you, thank you. At this time, we will open the floor to the public forum. I will remind you that during this first public comment session, you are restricted to items which are on the agenda, and you should identify your name, give your name and address. Any other questions or comments that you may have that are not directly on this agenda, you must wait until the second public session later this evening. Your statement is not to exceed three minutes of duration, even if you're making statements of a complimentary nature, and no participant is to speak more than once on the same topic. All statements are to be directed to the presiding officer, and you are not to direct any questions or comments to individual members of the board. We would appreciate your cooperation in those guidelines. At this time, the floor is now open for comments on the agenda.
Don't start the clock yet. Mark Klein, 7 Crenshaw Court. First, I'd like to congratulate and compliment all of our teachers, our parers, our principals, administrators, Camilla Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, along with the board members, for making us as successful as we are. And as far as the report made by the Assistant Superintendent, it's the first time in all the years that I'm here, to include the three years I was sitting on the board, that it wasn't just one, two or three grades that showed us doing well, and the other grades were not shown. The report was full, I appreciate it as a resident. Second thing, looking at our population, our student population, we grew this past year to 6,400 students, it's an increase of 181 students. Knowing our state aid, going back roughly at least two years ago, if not three years ago, I think what we amounted to was about $500 a student. If the state does not give us our fair share of money, and we have the increase in population, school population, we're getting nothing for the students. Here, we're a winning school system, we're doing everything right, we play the game they want, the way they wanna see the game played, and we get penalized. So you guys really did a hell of a job, and I'm proud to be part of Monroe. The last thing, and this pertains to the closed session, I would just like to say one thing before you go in and speak. When I sat on this board, there were a few instances where there were major, major ethics violations. I and another board member at the time asked our president, our sitting president at the time, to file ethics charges. One was against an administrator, one was against a board member. Nothing was ever done, and they were serious. What's going on now, and whether you wanna believe it or not, I have no idea what Mr. Preciosa is having ethics charges against, and I'm not asking.
Excuse me, Mr. Klein.
Yes.
And help me here, Mr. Gorsky, I'm not sure if your comments are related to the current agenda.
Well, it's on the agenda here. All I wanna do is make a statement so when you go into discussion...
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so there were ethics violations that were serious. Two board members, one was a long-sitting board member, a board member, wanted to bring ethics violations against these two people. It was turned down. Now, I can't believe anything was done so serious by Mr. Preciosa that they have to carry this as long as they have, God only knows how much we've spent, it's gotta be $20,000, $25,000 already. And I really would like you to think about it, and they gotta be damn serious to go to another hearing when perhaps a reprimand would do, it could, it could have been ended like something else could have been ended. I just ask you to think about it, do the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Klein, for your comments. Any other comments from the public on the agenda? Okay, I will then close the first public session, and we will go to committee reports. Do I have any committee chairperson to make a report tonight? No committee reports tonight? All right, then we will move to the superintendent's report.
Mr. President, before we go into my report, I just want to take us back a second for the, to recognize all the students that were involved in tonight's teacher and educational professional services dinner. And I'm just gonna read off their names, and Dory's actually helped me over here. For the cooks, it was Olivia Caccio, or Caccio, Miguel Cortez, Jamie Kirchner, Danielle Hansen, Michelle Hansen, Haley DeSalvo, and Chantel LeBrun, Michelle Becker, and Laurel Fox. For the servers, it was Arianna Moody, Chavron Sang, Jenny Do, Amber Lee, Tara Malone, Dimitri Davis, Amaru Young slash Davila. And for the staff members, it was Amanda Doherty, she was the event chef, Jill Calanker, she was food preparation and cooking. I think I mentioned some of these names as a matter of fact when we were there, but I wanna just say it again. Desiree Farrar for the decorations, Margaret Day for the staging, Jody Wazmarin for the decorations, Pam Felvano for the linens, and Julia Bulkley for the graphic design and printing. A round of applause for all the students and staff.
Thank you.
Mr. President, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve personnel items A through JJ. And board members, I did give you the addition as far as JJ, item JJ. So we're looking at items A through JJ.
Ms. Kolponovic has moved. Okay, Mr. Ryback has seconded it. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Arminio?
On page, are we on page 41 with the, is this including the following revised job description?
I'm sorry?
Is this on page 41F, the recommend, I'm sorry, J? Is that, is that, is that in this vote?
That's not under this one.
Not, okay, I'll wait, thank you.
It's for the next action.
Second, was that seconded?
It's been seconded, okay. Other questions? These personnel items start on page six and continue through page 40.
Forty.
Okay?
Including JJ.
So it's items A through JJ. Any questions, comments? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the superintendent's recommendations, items A through JJ. Mr. Gorsky, roll call vote?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Sarneski?
Yes.
Ms. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes to all recues on X, Y, Z, G, G.
X, Y, Z, G, G? So noted. Mrs. Kolponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, personnel items A through JJ passes.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsky.
Mr. President, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve board action items A through U.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Ms. De Mayo?
Ms. De Mayo? Okay, we have a first and a second that we approve, board action items A through U. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Arminio?
Just, can I have an explanation on the recommended, the revised job description, educational technology facilitator?
Which item is that?
F, on page 41.
We made a few adjustments to the job description. Karen O'Connell is retiring, so we will be hiring someone in her place. So we looked at the job description to see how it met our needs now with all of the different technologies, since the previous one was quite old. So a couple of things we added, we wanted to, we added the preferential number two under qualifications, preferred masters in instructional technology, that's a preferred requirement, so it's not a requirement. We also added under number three under qualifications, we added a couple of the programs that we're currently using in the district, Genesis, Genesis Lesson Planner, and My Learning Plan. We add, number four was the ability to work with a variety of technology devices across platforms, since we're under both Windows and Apple in the district. We changed who the person reports to because the person will be reporting to the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Technology, Director of Information Systems, sorry, Mr. Washington. And then we added some of the job goals would be colla, not only taking that teacher leadership role, but also collaborating with the technology network managers, making sure, and the workstation specialists to ensure communication and making sure that the needs of the teachers are being met. So that it would kind of be the voice of the teachers with the technology. And designing professional development courses appropriate for the needs and goals of the district with the professional development team. And in the, under performance responsibilities, we changed for number one, teaching experience from three-plus years to five-plus years. So those were all the changes that were made to the job description.
I have one more question on J, or, well, really, the, on G, approval for the staff for, okay, that's different, I'm so, so sorry. From G to M, are any of these requiring additional salaries? I think L is requiring additional salary, is that correct?
Could you restate that, Ms. Arminio? I didn't understand it myself.
All right, let me be more specific. When we make some changes or we add, we recommend an person for an appointment to an additional coordination, like in, like J, are we getting additional salaries, getting additional salaries for that appointment? It's more of an additional to the job description.
There's no stipend for that position.
No stipend for that, okay.
As part of the job responsibilities.
And any of the others to M? I know L has a stipend, that's fine.
L isn't a stipend, that's a contract with Project Lead the Way to work with them. So it's not a stipend for any specific staff members, it's something that we pay Project Lead the Way to come in and work with us.
It's a professional development, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on board action items A through U? Okay, Mr. Gorsky, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes, thanks for the clarification, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Sarneski?
Yes.
Ms. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, board action items A through U passes unanimously.
Mr. President, that ends my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through F be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on board action items A through F of the business administrator's Okay, seeing none, Mr. Gorsky, roll call vote?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Sarneski?
Yes.
Ms. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, except I must recuse myself on items B and C because I am on the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission.
So noted. Mr. Board President, board action items A through F has passed, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, at this time, board president's report, I have a few, few items, they will be brief, however. I believe you've all been notified through email, and I would encourage as many members of our board as possible to attend the annual legislative dinner on June the 11th. That is, I believe, a Tuesday or a Thursday, it's a weekday at any rate. There will be a legislative panel discussion, remarks by the president of the State Board of Education, and also the keynote speaker will be David Hespe, who is our State Commissioner of Education. I think our attendance at this could be worthwhile, and if you are planning to go, please communicate or give a call to someone. It's possible to form carpool since the dinner will be down in Trenton. That's on June the 11th, and the deadline for registration is June the 5th, and I understand there is no cost involved. I don't know who's picking up the tab, but at least there's no cost to our district. On behalf of the entire board, I extend our sincere wishes to Karina Fanawala, one of our students, who was seriously injured this past weekend in an automobile accident. She was standing out on the street while participating in advertising her track team's car wash, and we wish her a speedy and a total recovery. I move that we, I would also like to move, because there's been some questions about this, I am moving that we have one representative from the Jamesburg Board of Ed assist in handing diplomas to members of our graduating class. I believe it is my understanding, but I stand to be corrected, I believe that members of the Jamesburg Board have always participated, have been present at the ceremony and often set on the dais, but in terms of participating in handing out diplomas, I know at times they've been restricted to only a family member, at least that's what I was led to believe. But since this is the first time that I'm dealing with this as the president, I wanted to make it clear that since part of our graduating class comes from Jamesburg, there is no reason that I see that we should exclude them from assisting in handing out the diplomas. So that is my motion, is there a...
Second?
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Can I second?
Joe was first.
Ms. De Mayo?
Okay, any, any comments or questions about that before we vote?
You wanna be more clear on it?
Okay, well, you have a question then, because then I can be clearer, maybe.
You're, you're allowing any member who has a graduating student?
No, I did not say that. I said there would be...
That's why I'm asking you.
No, my, my motion is that one member of the James Board, Jamesburg Board of Education would assist the other board members from Monroe in handing students their diplomas.
Okay, in the past, since I've been here and in the past, going to the graduations, and it's always been an extended courtesy to allow those board members, whether they're sitting on this board, to have the privilege of giving their students and/or relatives diplomas, whether it be the person who's sitting in this chair or other board members from the Jamesburg Board of Education, being that you had stated that we are... Being that you had stated that we are accepting in this district, Jamesburg students, I feel that it is being a big misrepresentation of other board members in their participation in this high school. So I would like to...
I, I, I...
You're, you're wanting...
I listened very closely, Mr. Zarneski, but I really didn't understand what you were saying at the end.
I'm trying to understand the motion, that you only want the person who is sitting on this chair to be the representative for Jamesburg, and not have those other board members have the honor or privilege of giving their students their children their diplomas. That courtesy has always been extended to any Jamesburg board member in the past, not restricting it to just one.
Mr. Poy, thank you. And Mr. Zarneski is correct, that in the past, it has been a courtesy to allow a Jamesburg board member to hand out diplomas along with the Monroe Board. However, your motion is still a good recommendation to have it now on record in an action item approved by the board. And I believe that Mr. Poy's motion was to allow any Jamesburg board member, one, to facilitate in the handing out of diplomas, is that correct?
Yes, and not to exclude other Jamesburg members from handing out a diploma to their own family member. No, that was never the intention to exclude that. But to, to basically make it official that there is no question in the future going forward that a member, a representative of the Jamesburg Board actually participates in handing diplomas out to all of the students, not just to, you know, one or two family members. I don't know if that's making it clear or not.
That's why I was asking for clarification, because this year alone, we have, I think, three board members that have children graduating. And like in the past, it was extended as a courtesy to those board members to allow them to give their children their diplomas. And it just so happens that we were asked, because I've done it before, you want to give out more diplomas. So now that you made clarification on that, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Maybe if we changed one to any...
Well, I, I, what I want to avoid is, I want to avoid a lot of rotating people, I mean, it's pretty, pretty, it rotates quite a bit as it is right now. And that's why I was restricting it to one who would assist in the general distribution of the diplomas, okay? And certainly, any board member from Jamesburg or Monroe that wants to present the diploma to a particular family member, I don't intend at all to exclude that from happening. I'm just basically trying to make it official, because I don't think there's anything in the record that basically says we can have a member of the Jamesburg Board participate in the handing of diplomas among all of the students and not just family members. Mrs. Armenio?
Okay, my question for clarification is, Mr. Zarneski is a Jamesburg Board member sitting on our board, are you talking about that one person or an additional person too, Mr. Zarneski?
Well, it...
That's, I just need, you know, which one is it?
I, I don't have any intention in terms of who that person would be, okay?
No, no, but, go ahead.
If I can get this straight, this way we all understand. We're going to basically say that the representative from Jamesburg will hand out diplomas to all students as far as being in the rotation, except for the fact when another Jamesburg Board member's child comes up, that person at that time is allowed to give their own child just that diploma and nobody else. Now, doing that in the past, it's kind of hard to watch when your child is coming up in whatever group it is, to try to run out there, excuse me, and get in line to hand out that diploma. It was always easier, here comes my child, here comes my niece, my nephew, get in line, hand out the diploma to five, six other students before their child gets there, and then sit back down again. That would, in my eyes, cause more confusion and stop the ceremony, to try to get one person to give one diploma to one person.
Doug?
I understand your point there.
Doug?
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
It's more like past practice, because it's never been anything official or unofficial, it's just that the, the board member from Jamesburg who sits on this board, represents Jamesburg, always gave out diplomas as part of the Monroe Township Board of Education, representing the Jamesburg students. So they did it the same as any of the Monroe Board members, but if there was a board member from Jamesburg who had a student who was graduating, or a niece, or a nephew, or relative, they always were able to give that student a diploma. It's never been an issue about where you came in, we were, we always knew because we always spoke about it, that I'm giving this diploma to this certain person, and it was just gave up that spot so that a Jamesburg rep could give their child a diploma. So it's never been an issue, it's just something that we've always accommodated Jamesburg with, which I believe is the right thing to do.
Mr. Braverman?
It's always worked informally in the past, I really think you should just withdraw, withdraw your motion.
And, and based on the discussion, I'm happy to do that. I thought it might help to, to make it, you know, an official motion and have that understood going forward. The question arose because I had gotten a request from a member of the Jamesburg Board...
I responded.
...to, to participate in, in that distribution, and, and that, that, that request seemed to at least did not restrict itself to just that board member's family members, but a more general participation. So I was trying to get that clarified, but it appears that there's really no need to, and we'll let Jamesburg deal with who is the Jamesburg representative in terms of the general distribution of the diplomas. And if there is a family member, then that can be accommodated, all right. I'd like to update the, the public, because the board has been updated, but I'd like to update the public on the superintendent's search. We will begin interviews next week, and we hope, we hope to schedule the second round for sometime around May 28th. We are hoping to enter into contract negotiations shortly thereafter, and we would like to submit a contract to the county superintendent for approval by June 15th. Now, the reason for the June 15th deadline is because it is my understanding that the county superintendent's office requires 30 days, and they won't seem to do it in anything less than that. So working backwards from 30 days, if, if all of that falls into place, and it's a big if, but if all of that falls into place, then we will have someone to replace Mr. Ventrilo, hopefully around the beginning of school, and Mr. Ventrilo can go back to his happy family at the...
Applegarth.
At the Applegarth School, which is very much a desire of his, even though we very much appreciate the job that Mr. Ventrilo is, has, and is doing for us. That concludes my report, is there any other Board of Education business? Mr. Mayo?
Just back to the legislative dinner that you're talking about, he's also speaking during the day, from 8:30 to 2:00. So if anybody wants to go during the day to hear Hespe, Commissioner Hespe speak, you can do it during the day.
Well, that's the only time it is, isn't it?
You said it was a dinner.
Well, I mean, well, it's, it's over lunch, I'm sorry.
You, I, okay.
You have to excuse me, that was probably my, my Texas upbringing, dinner was always at lunch, we didn't have lunch.
For some reason, I thought he was speaking twice.
We had dinner and supper.
Okay.
So you'll have to excuse that. No, it's from 8:30 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. Yeah, sorry about that. Mr. Kaufman?
Many years ago, the board wasn't paperless, and we didn't get our board packets on paper, it was all electronic, we'd get copies anyway. All of a sudden, the last, I don't know how long, maybe the last couple of months or whatever, we, we get weekly packets again. Why? Why are we killing trees for us? I get everything electronically, I don't need this.
Okay, then you might request of the superintendent's office that they not send you a packet. I have personally requested to get a packet, because I'm old-fashioned, I like the paper and pencil, I like to be able to jot down things and write comments and questions, et cetera, and I find that I can't do that so well, and I don't want to use my own printer ink to print out all these pages.
I don't need mine. Anyone else?
I already sent my request in to Kathy to cancel mine, too.
You canceled your subscription?
And I did, too.
You did, too?
Yeah, I did.
I have, just to confirm, so I have Lou, I have Kathy Kay, and I have Rob, not asking for hard copy, okay. Anyone else, just let me know, you can email me if you change your mind. If you'd like copies, let me know.
Okay, any, any other board business? All right, then, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, to discuss the following subject, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as well as an update... Yes, an update on pending litigation regarding Mr. Anthony Prezioso and the Monroe Township Board of Education of Middlesex County. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I would anticipate this closed session would last...
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay? At which time we will return and have our second public forum. All in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a first and a second. Okay. Armenio and...
That's fine, I didn't know that.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any abstentions? All right, fine, we will now go into closed session, and hopefully we will return prior to 8:45, or sooner. We will now resume with the public portion of our board meeting and go to our second public forum. Anyone wishing to speak, please proceed to the microphone at the podium at this time. Thank you.
Yes.
Ira Tesler, living Elliott Drive. I'll just be brief, I would just like to thank the board and the staff for all their work this year. I know the culinary students cooked the dinner tonight, as they always did in the past, the teacher dinner. And my middle daughter Rebecca is graduating this year, she's a senior, and she has participated in the culinary program for the first three years, and now she does her senior option in the culinary class, every day, fourth block. She's actually finished her hours, she doesn't eat anymore, but she loves it so much, she stays every day to participate and help the students. So I'd like to give a little shout out to the Amanda Doherty, this teacher, for her four years of service to her. And my daughter is going to Johnson Wells this year to pursue her dream of baking and pastry. So I'd just like to give a shout out to the board, the staff, and, and everybody who helped her in achieving her goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ira.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Cav, and I'm from 406 Morning Glory Drive, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. We just, I just moved to the, to Monroe Township like a month back, so I'm very excited to be here. My daughter goes in first grade. We live in Monroe Manor, which is south of Route 33. There are a few things that I wanted to bring up regarding transportation and all, which are basically from all of us, from that community. Right now, in that community, we have three buses playing, and there are, for one of the roads, there are two stops, actually, two stops where each stop has 40 kids getting into the bus, so especially in winter, it creates a lot of traffic-related issues, so I wanted to mention that we need additional stops on that road, it's Morning Glory Drive. So if we can work on that, that'll be really great. Also, the buses, number of buses, the three buses, and this is for elementary school, which is Oak Tree and Applegarth, the three buses playing are insufficient, each bus has about 40, 45 kids, and there are only three stops. So if, if the board can look into, or the Transportation Department can look into adding some buses, looking at how many total kids are there, and how many buses are required, that'll be really great. Other thing we wanted to bring up was the number of kids in Oak Tree and Applegarth. My daughter's class has about 29 kids, same is the case with others, she's in first grade. So I want to see if there is a plan to increase the number of classes with all the new families moving in and all the increase in kids. We know in September, there are additional kids going to be going to KG and first grade. And the final point was regarding the before and after care for the elementary schools, Oak Tree and Applegarth, we were initially told that Board of Education was going to take it over, I'm not sure if it was final, and they were not aware of what the plans are, so if we could get some direction in that, because it's very important for working parents that we have before and after care. So just wanted to bring up those points, if, if the board has any, any, anything to say about those, but just wanted to bring up those points.
I have your, your questions, I wrote them down, just to let you know, we'll take a look at that information. I can assure you, though, that as though there's 40 kids on the buses, that there are 54 seats on the bus.
Okay.
So as much, as much as it seems like that bus is full, it is not.
Okay.
The other thing, too, as far as, you know, your question about the enrollment at Oak Tree School, that's all part of our redistricting plan, so that, the impact, that will change then come September, as far as, as we organize the schools and enrollment numbers.
Okay.
So those numbers will be lower. And as far as the before and after school care program, that's now been replaced with Falcon Care, that information is starting to get out there as well, too.
Okay.
And it's already on the website, so you could take a look at that.
Appreciate it. Regarding the number of, regarding the, increasing the number of stops on Morning Glory Drive, because, one, there are two stops which has 40 kids each, so that creates a little bit of traffic problem, and in the morning, it's a lot of rush, so...
And I, and I added to your question, so feel free then, if you don't mind, just give me an email tomorrow as far as what, with some of the particulars, and I'll look into that.
Absolutely, sure. I have this paper, if you want to take a look, I've just...
Feel free to give it to me, yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mark Klein, 7 Crenshaw. Eighteen, you're showing the next meeting Thursday, May 14th, that's got to be a mistake. You really have another one tomorrow?
Yeah, we're having all kinds of...
You mean I have to come back again?
Yeah.
And then, as far as the, the closed session, this is the first time in all the years that I've been here, that you came in sooner than what you said you were going to come in. I would gather, being that the attorney isn't here, that you probably didn't discuss the case that's pending. Right? Well, oh, you can't say anything, okay, well, that's, that's my assumption, but anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, any, any other comments or questions from the public? Okay, seeing no one, coming to the microphone, I will then close the second public forum. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is tomorrow evening, May 14th, 7 o'clock, here at the high school media center. The, this will be an open public session, we will, it's been specially set up so that all members of the board could be present for coming to some kind of a decision about the iPad initiative going forward into next year. That is the only topic, I believe, on the agenda. All the board members have received it, I just haven't looked at it today, but that's what we're talking about tomorrow night. That will be the only topic, but the, the public is welcome, it is an open meeting, and the board will be taking action at that time. Okay, I would move that we adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Objections? Abstentions? Okay, that's it.